I call the planning commission to order for Monday, June 4th, 2018. First order of business is to approve the minutes from March 19th, which was a long time ago. That's goodness. Give everybody a minute to just get their bearings with that. Anyone want to make a motion to pass the minutes? Seconded?
I'm seconded.
Any discussion? On favor? Say aye.
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 I think I need to abstain because I wasn't actually here, right?
You don't have to be here.
Aye, okay. It's me.
Okay. Yeah. All right. Let's see. I don't have any announcements, so do you?
I have two announcements that I can think of for you. The town plan was approved by the select board in May.
Right.
So we adopted a town plan, and it was also approved by the Wyndham Regional Commission. And with that, on Friday, I submitted the application or the renewal for the downtown designation. So we needed an adopted and approved town plan to do that. We got it. So we got that application in. So that is something that needs to be renewed every five years. We've had it designated downtown since 2002. And what it does is, DBA is kind of a downtown organization for us, and it allows commercial property owners in the district to access tax credits. So whether it's code improvement, historic, there's some technology, kind of tax credits. So it was important to get done. It will be heard by the downtown board at the end of June, and then hopefully everything's great and we've had...
The downtown board is in...
Mupulier? Mupulier.
Yep.
So the application, DBA provided some of the materials, such as the work plan and the budget and whatnot.
And we have not done this before, has this been...
Yes. No, the town's had it since, we've renewed it several times, but kind of every time that it gets renewed, there's different requirements, so it's relatively...
Have we changed it at all, or are we just...
Nope, the district remains the same. Yeah, and the district is consistent with what was looked at in the parking study, actually. So, yeah, so no changes that way. Just have to keep it up to date. So those were my two applications, or my two announcements.
Great. My approval and... Okay, so let's, there's no members of the public here, so let's go right to the parking study?
So I don't know if you've had a chance to read through it, but I gave you as kind of a little synopsis of it. I passed this out. This was, Andy Hill was our consultant, and he actually presented to the select board in the beginning of May, because the select board was starting to work on their parking budget and capital plan. So kind of in summary, you probably saw this from the executive summary, so there's no immediate large parking shortages that were identified. They did occupancy counts, they did, they also looked at how long people utilized a space, you know, what the turnover was. There's about 2,300 parking spaces in the downtown, both...
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, both. And about 52% of them are private, so there's a lot more private parking spaces than you might realize, at least there was for me.
And that's like the bank?
Yeah, the banks, the churches across the street, is it the oil company, Dead River, Fleming?
Right, Marlborough College is next one.
Marlborough, yeah, exactly.
The whole public park.
Yeah, so that's a big one. So utilization peaked at 71% on an average weekday and at 60% on an average weekend. So there definitely is a lot of capacity, but there are also times when there are, you know, areas of downtown that are pretty full up. So the mid-block parking anywhere around Broad Street to Elliot Street can be very tight. And actually, when court is in session and there's juries and that kind of thing, this part of downtown can be very busy. But when they looked at, when they did the turnover study, they basically were collecting license plate data, and they found that most people are parking within, you know, if they're downtown on the street, they're parking within the two hours. There was very, even in Harmony Lot, there's very few people that are feeding the meters all day. It is happening, but it's not as much as you would expect. And then in the study, they also did some projections of development for downtown, and they did find that we'll still have enough supply. So one of the things they did is they took Preston Lot out of commission because the EPA, Sherrett, kind of discussed that as a potential park. I think last minute, we did give them the Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust development that's going to be on Flat Street, the new snow building. They looked at that. I think they looked at some of the vacant commercial spaces that might be utilized as restaurants or that kind of thing. And again, we have enough supply. Some blocks, you know, the parking situation may be exacerbated.
So can, may I ask why, why this was done? Is there something in particular that was...
Part of it was because we're going to work on a downtown master plan, and so a lot of times, there's been complaints about, about the parking situation. People feel there's not enough parking in downtown, and we kind of thought otherwise, that there probably was. There might be a mismatch between people's wants and the available parking, but it was kind of setting us up for the downtown master plan, as well as just kind of answering some of those perceptions that we would hear over and over again. But I think it's, it's been useful, especially because the select board is looking at the, at their parking budget and capital needs right now, so...
So it's the select board's purview to change the meter structure and those kinds of things?
Yeah.
Things that were asked for.
Yeah. So a couple of the ways that they were, they boiled it down to kind of three, three areas that they could address, which was the lack of availability along four downtown streets. And so they were suggesting differential pricing to reduce usage in high-apprentice blocks, and so that might be raising on-street parking and reducing it in high-growth of the transportation center. Better signage, expanding the town's webpage, investigate shared parking arrangements. So that might be where, you know, the banks are usually, you know, do not park here, we'll tow, but maybe you could open that up at certain times, you know, in the evening, banks are in session. Especially for, we heard a lot about the residential parking needs in downtown, so maybe two property owners could come to some sort of agreement on shared parking. And then there was...
That seemed to be the major issue.
We heard, right?
Yeah. From residents.
From residents.
Yeah.
I was surprised by the lack of attentiveness to handicapped or different areas of parking, given that I've heard complaints about the fact that there's nothing on Main, there's not a single handicap parking system in Main Drive.
So our consultant addressed that before the select board, and it was interesting. He basically said that Vermont state law allows a handicapped person with a placard to park in any space. No, I mean, it doesn't mean that it's necessarily available, but they can basically park on Main Street, they don't have to pay the meter, and they are legally able to do that.
They don't have to pay the meter, but they have to compete with everybody else for the availability of a spot?
And then are there designated spots in like Harmony?
There are designated spots in Harmony, I think in Hybridge, you know, I think in, I think there's, I know Hybridge has it.
But I think there are a few in Harmony, even in Truitt's. Right.
But not on Main Street.
But I can't speak to all the other ones because I'm...
Has anybody ever talked about this, one having one or two on Main Street? Is that sort of...
Not that I'm aware of.
So that study, the work that the town did to make those like curb changes and so forth on sidewalks a couple of years ago, who orchestrated that?
That was, I think Public Works was primarily involved with that. It was a grant from Vermont Agency of Transportation, and I think that the Wyndham Regional Commission made a project management. There was a couple of downtown sidewalk improvements and, yeah.
It just seems funny that that's done without the benefit of this, that needed to be the parking changes. But I guess there aren't any that are needed, other than some sort of metering change?
Yeah, some metering. You know, I think that one of the things that came out of this is more bike parking, and I did see, so the select board is continuing their conversation tomorrow night, and I think, you know, the town will pursue bike racks through retrans看待house grants.
Taking parking space for bikers?
I don't know what the thought is there. I mean, that's one way you could do it, is kind of create a bike parking, you could take a non-street parking or something in one of the, I believe, one of the lots, and create a bike parking. That's a possibility. I mean, I think those are things, these are all good things to explore in the downtown master plan, for sure.
Who does that?
We do it.
We do.
Planning commission.
Next job. Oh, that's going to be fun.
Yeah, we're...
Go team!
There was a lot of interest in both the survey and just, you know, from the consultant, the recommendation for having smart meters, so taking credit cards and whatnot. And so that's one of the things the select board will be talking about tomorrow night, also whether or not they want to use a parking app, so that, that might be less money upfront, so...
And how, just explain again how that works.
An app would be that the town contracts with some developer, or there's lots of existing parking apps, so we'd be contracted with one. And you would download the app on your phone, and then when you would go to park, you could just, you know, pay through your phone.
Will it show you spaces, right?
There are apps that do that. I don't know what's under consideration.
Might get people to utilize spaces for their destination or certified, why can't I find a space?
Yeah.
One way is...
Yeah.
And then the parking meter folks have access to the app, and they can see which spots haven't been paid and which haven't. Like they're walking around, and they're like, oh, this one wasn't paid.
Yes. Yeah. And it would be in addition to the meters that we already have.
And from the app, can you extend the time?
The one app that I did see information on is yes, you can extend the time. You can also get notifications that your time is about to expire, so...
Who knows, because if you run into a friend, that's where you can...
Yes.
And what, and that's less expensive than switching the meters over?
Yes, so...
So that's the idea.
To switch, yeah, so I think the, the figure I saw from the last select board meeting is for each individual meter, it's like $500 a meter, it might even be a little bit higher than that. So I think the cost was going to be, to just do the on-street meters was going to be like eighty-three thousand plus. And so the town was considering, or was making a recommendation to kind of look into that. You basically get into a contract with the vendor, and you're kind of leasing it until you've paid it off. But the data has shown that, you know, with smart meters, or that you're going to increase your revenues, so you can kind of pay it off.
So if the town chooses the app, that will be in addition to the meters that already exist?
Yes.
You could do either or?
Yes, my understanding is. So that was something that was under consideration at the last select board meeting, and then DBA, the downtown board, their executive director, came in and said, well, have you considered a parking app, you know, put on your smartphone? And that, there would still be a cost, but it's, I think it's like three, anywhere between three and five grand. So you could kind of do a trial of it for about a year, see how it goes, so...
Sounds like a no-brainer.
So that could be the first step. Pretty soon, the bond for the transportation center will be paid off. I think there's maybe one or two more years left on that, so there may be some more cash in the fund to do other capital improvements.
So was this parking study's purview also to make any recommended changes or maintenance to the parking garage?
They note that it's kind of crappy and that people avoid it, so it seems like that's part of the...
Well, they suggested lining.
They did, they did make some suggestions. One is to use white paint in there, which, if you've been in the, I think it's Northampton, has white paint, so it's brighter.
Brighter.
Some lighting, I mean, in general, lighting wasn't bad, but it's not really uniform, so having some additional lighting was a recommendation.
It's probably, I mean, just from living in Brattleboro, don't you think it's also probably the, what, whatever the, what if I correct term for people who are...
Attractive nuisance?
Is that what they're called?
Yeah.
Not the people.
The parking lot has...
It is an attractive nuisance.
It has become an attractive nuisance.
Attractive nuisance, is that what it is?
Okay.
White paint.
It seems like low-hanging fruit.
Obnoxious music.
To see what that might do. You know what I mean? If that, like, gets that much more people using it, then it would be, it might adjust to the...
Yeah, I, the most recent memo I saw for the select board tomorrow night basically said, you know, they're, they don't know the cost of some of these things. If they find that they can do it under $10,000, then they might have the funding to be able to implement some of those. There is a problem with the stairs at the transportation centers that those could have to be rebuilt.
They're rusting or something?
Yeah. So, you know, they seemed, they seemed receptive to some changes at the transportation...
Rusty isn't part of it, isn't it?
Yes.
Dangerous?
The east, the east side of the stairs.
How do you function?
Yeah.
As in, take the west?
As in, don't go in there funky as in politically correct. I have to say, I was a little bit surprised with the survey results, because, you know, I don't know if people don't really use it and therefore don't, didn't have, you know, strong reactions. It didn't actually fare as poorly as I thought it might.
As it should?
Yeah.
I use it, I mean, it's a great, I think it's a great resource.
I don't, I, it's not my first, it's not my first choice to use it, but I will use it, but I'll definitely use it, I suppose.
I know residents.
All right.
Okay, so...
So we're moving on.
So can we, can we convey to the select board, other than the report itself, what are, what's on?
We can, I mean, they're, they're discussing it tomorrow night, so I think the best, I don't...
Can you tell me?
I, I can, if you, if you want to...
Yeah, I'm busy, otherwise I'd go tomorrow night, but I can't tomorrow night, but...
Do you have some suggestions?
Well, we all, it seems, it seems to me that we all thought that trying the app was a great idea. Do we all agree?
Yeah. I also think it's not a bad idea to have those single units and get rid of the meters entirely.
Well, for now, I think we've got, you know, people who don't like change and an app, and use the book.
I guess the one question is also that there is the added cost of the signage to help people understand the app, right? When you pull up to it, how you're communicating that, so it's not just the app, it's...
So there has to be some consideration to public information.
Yeah, there has to be something on the meter, which is like, don't have change? Use the app, you know, or something that's...
And the app must have that sort of signage that they make available to metered spots.
And for those remaining few of us who don't utilize cell phones actively.
Quarters.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, you know, they could still decide to do both. There is the option on the table of getting into new, it would be the single head, because the bigger parking lots, I think those kiosks are too expensive to consider right now, but it's not, not completely off the table for, you know, I think they understand that to move there in the future.
And white paint.
White paint.
And white paints, yeah.
Just tell them the commission is pretty unanimous on white paint.
We think it's not a bad idea to give the white paint to the people hanging out.
What was there, what do you mean on exploring the public park and partnership like they've got?
There was no discussion about with the select board that night. I don't, so I think that could, you know, that's probably something that, I mean, would be under planning's purview?
Yeah, because that seems like that could be a lower note cost if there were private lots that agreed to, you know, do something like this. People on the TV, it says, customer parking is Monday through Saturday, nine to five, but visitors may park Monday through Saturday, five to nine, or Sunday.
Are there liability issues associated with them?
I believe that there can be. There are shared parking agreements that, you know, get legally filed, that I think deal, I didn't look at them. In the parking study document, there, they probably address it.
I think the thing about that is that it was probably much more labor-intensive, like you would need to dedicate some serious time, you know what I mean? Because it's really like happen developing a contractual agreement with each one's private, figuring who it is and having to meet with them.
You have to figure enforcement to, if somebody left their vehicle there and now it's, you know, business hours.
And those are kind of addressed...
Do they have that in the, in the appendix? I did not read all of these.
So that's just not an easy fix for the present time.
But it's probably something that we should explore more in the downtown master plan, especially to meet the needs of residential.
Bike, right, sure, I think bike.
Right, so that's exciting, we get to think about that.
Maybe bike lanes to go along with the bike parking.
Dairy dream. The air drain.
Okay, shall we move on to the brownfields program?
Sure, it's been a while since we talked about brownfields.
We need to find some petroleum sites.
We do need to...
Please, please.
So, didn't we talk about brownfields when you came in?
I know what they are.
You do, okay.
Yeah.
So I've just printed...
We do, but I do.
Yeah, I only printed up our hazardous assessment funds. So first thing, these grants are for three years, and we got it starting in October of 2015, which meant, means that the grant ends in September of this year. I've talked to my project manager, and he's encouraged me to file an extension. We can basically get a one-year extension, after which point, they will allow us to continue to use any money that we have committed, so any sites that we're currently working on, but they won't, you know, so we have like 170 or something left in petroleum funds, unless we're working on a site, the majority of that money, money will go back.
Can we, in the extension, is there a way, like, in the reporting, can you say, like, we just don't have that money, can we move some of this money over here? We have a lot of these.
We can't move it to hazardous, so it's, and I said, well, what if we gave some of the money back? And he said, it's just easier to just keep the money for a year if you don't, you know, if you don't use it. He said it's not uncommon for, especially in northern New England, for towns to have problems using the petroleum funds. And part of that is because we have a lot of companies that own several gas stations, and they, so they bought them up. And when you're looking at a petroleum site, you're looking at two, two parties back, so both the current owner and the previous owner, to see if they're financially viable and whether or not they're liable for contamination. So a lot of times, you can get past like one owner, but not the second, and so it's just harder to use the funds. He said so...
Which is good, because it just means it's a responsible party.
Yeah, they are looking at the federal level of kind of loosening things up a little bit. It probably won't happen with our funding, but when we applied for the petroleum funding, we thought we were going to have a project down on the waterfront in conjunction.
The girl's side?
Yeah, we thought, we, we thought that the town might be getting that, so that, we don't know what's happening. It doesn't sound like that's going to happen, so, so we had kind of a site in mind.
And it can only be used for, it can't be used for preventative stuff on existing gas stations?
No, no.
So it's basically former gas stations or gas storage places?
Yeah, former gas stations, automobile service stations, you know, there's, there's definitely sites that have come along. I actually had one recently that tried to get into our program, and, you know, it was two owners back that was still viable, it was still a viable company, and so I couldn't use it, and there's a property transfer that's going to happen. The state actually stepped in and is doing the phase one work on it, and if, if it needs phase two, then, you know, when it transfers, then it could come into our program.
Hmm.
So they are just, they're definitely more difficult to use. On the agenda, I had a discussion of the petroleum funds. My EPA project manager has said that one of the things we could do is hire one of our pre-qualified consultants to kind of look at an area of town and try to figure out, are there petroleum sites here that could be eligible for it?
So an identification study?
It's kind of a desktop study, they'll review state records and stuff. And, you know, they're basically creating an inventory, and some people are uncomfortable with an inventory, because they feel like it can, you know, put a site, put a property on a list.
Tete in some way.
Yeah.
It's real tete.
But do we have any? I mean, do, are there, it would, they would be discovering a site where there was potential industry of gas?
Given that those tires popped up in that woodland, you know, I could imagine that there might be, there are landfills that are, you know, that could be researched, right?
It could be old, old dumps for sure, junkyards, like those would fall under petroleum.
And if they're doing this desktop survey, and it's not really rocket science in any way.
No, I mean, you know, it's not, we're not going to be, you know, maybe we spend a couple of grand to do this. I mean, it is a possibility, I can talk with some of my consultants to figure out what they've done before. I mean, I feel like, you know, I certainly know that there was a host of automobile industries and whatnot along Flat Street, but, you know, maybe Canal Street, but, you know, I'm just trying to think, what is the appropriate area to do? I don't know, do we just want to focus on the downtown, or do we want to...
Can you also use those petroleum funds for planning, for example, the Marrow site or some other site? Like, can we kind of imagine its redevelopment in some way to kind of say, when someone comes along, you can do X, Y, and Z with this property?
We can, that is the kind of work you can do with it. I would need to check, I mean, maybe our whole area then becomes, maybe, maybe we look at the Flat Street corridor down to the waterfront, and we, we do a planning study there. And we identify sites, and then we also identify the vision. Because there isn't really that kind of planning work that has been done with the new bridge coming in, you know, we've kind of left everything up to...
That's great. It's in New Hampshire's hands, you know, as to where it comes in, but we haven't really talked about.
I like that waterfront. I like that.
What about, I don't know if we're allowed to even say this, but what about the diamond stone copy of the North Pole that passed 74, I don't know if it was planted in that?
Yeah, I mean, that could, that could definitely, if it came available, I think right now there's none.
Right, because it's in private, yeah. Then we could use this, that money to clean up.
To do, to do a phase one. We cannot do cleanup, we can do the phase one, which is the kind of background, interviews, site walk. Phase two is the actual testing, and we can do cleanup planning. We cannot clean up sites with our funds. But Wyndham Regional Commission does have a cleanup fund. They intro, for, they can do grants, they can do low-interest loans for nonprofits, or they can do grants for municipalities and nonprofits, low-interest loans for private property owners. State sometimes has some funding, the EPA, they have a federal grant, cleanup grant. So, yeah, I mean, we could, we could do an area-wide plan, grant, that would probably be good.
Kill a couple of bridges.
And other things, like in area-wide plans, what they'll look at is infrastructure, so... So we know there's stormwater issues along Flat Street, so maybe we can pull in some of those other.
And is there any, anything along the Whitestone that could advance the Whitestone plan and use petroleum funds?
A site assessment of the parking lot, if it were coming out or something. Don't think we can do a site assessment of the parking lot because we am it and so we're in the chain of liability. We could use our funds, we could possibly, possibly the Wyndham Regional Commission. But though, though we own the site, we are not, we didn't, we're not, we didn't, we didn't contribute to any contamination. So I should, I would probably need to check into that. We have not contaminated that site. It would be the historic use of the site that probably caused any problems.
So then how far back does the liability go for that if it doesn't go with us?
It goes back to.
Okay, so do we want to go over this chart then?
Yeah, so I guess as we walk through them, I can just give you an update on each site.
That sounds great.
So 56 Elm Street, that was the livery building that New England Youth Theater owns. It's the red building or the formal red building on Elm Street. It is gone. They are constructing their outdoor classroom and amphitheater. And they're expecting, I think last I had heard construction is supposed to be completed this month, so.
Yeah, and it's cool.
Do the building next to it or is that still back for?
That is still kind of off file because of the contamination and the cost to clean it and or demolish it and remove that.
That's the paint.
But actually, if you want, we can jump, jump down to 48 Elm Street because that is that neighboring building. So there's the cinder block addition that has got some tarp over it because the roof got damaged. So that's 48 Elm Street. They're currently, well, they're not in there yet. They've put together a plan to sample the paint on the cinder block inside the building so that it can be categorized appropriately categorized for disposal. So there were some hits for PCBs in those, in that brick as well. There are areas that were not, so they're trying to kind of get a better picture of it to decide, does it have to go to a PCB landfill, in which case it's very expensive? Or can some of it just be other waste? EPA has had that sampling planned since January and they have not yet responded to it. There's basically, when you're dealing with PCBs, you're dealing with the Toxic Substance Control Act, which is kind of separate from all the other brownfield stuff. And there's one person that reviews the TOSCO-related stuff for New England, if you think about it. All our old buildings.
One?
One, one person. So it's not uncommon to be.
Budget cuts.
Backlogged. It's actually ever since I've been involved, it's one person.
Oh, really?
It's crazy. Not that there aren't budget cuts, because there are, but. So hopefully, I mean, they want that concrete building down. The town wants it down, the fire department wants it down, it is kind of a safety hazard. So hopefully that work will take place this summer. New England Youth Theater, I believe that they have the funding to take it down once it be okay. Let's go back up to Reformer Building, you know, we're all done with that one. Police Department during that, it's all good. 250 Byrd Street, so that's the floodplain restoration project. Since we last met, Vermont River Conservancy found out that they received an EPA cleanup grant for $200,000. So that will take care of the PAH in the soil, maybe, get to that. They don't get that money till October 1st, but that was a big, that was exciting for them to get that. And then, and for those of you here, I think in November, we had a public hearing on grant. They are intending to apply for a hazard mitigation grant for the remaining of the floodplain restoration work. And the last I knew, they, they were working on how much soil had to be removed, what was the cost to do that? Because part of applying for a hazard mitigation grant is called benefit cost analysis. And so they're looking at the cost of it and a whole bunch of things.
And we can use these funds for a well restoration plan?
If it's part of.
That's great.
Yeah, if it's part of the cleanup.
Right.
Clean land.
Yeah, so, um, there's a weird thing that happened in the last week or so and we haven't worked through it yet. But there were some changes to state standards last summer. And one of the changes was PAH in soil. So there used to be one standard, if it was above it, you know, they had a, had an industrial standard and a residential. So if you were going to do a residential use on a property and it was above that standard, then you needed to clean it up. There was a different standard, it was a bit lenient, I guess, for industrial use. Because this is going to be open space and people are going to be on, on the site, we were at the residential level. The state last summer changed the standards, so now they have an urban standard and a, I guess rural standard. Because PAH is kind of have it from incomplete burning. You know, in an, in an urban area, you tend to have higher PHs as background. So when those new standards came out, the PA, we discovered that the PHs on the site were actually below the urban standards. So in an ideal situation, we wouldn't need to clean them up. However, last summer Vermont D C said, well, but you're in our liability relief program, so we're going to still make you do a corrective action plan and clean those soils up. So we got to work, you know, applied for the EPA cleanup grant. We finished the alternatives analysis for a corrective action plan. And again, that was one that was sitting with the state for several months. And they just got back to us and said, oh, you know, we've decided that they're all below urban standards, so you don't have to, you don't have to submit a cleanup plan. We'll just write a certificate of completion and you'll get your liability protection. So our concern now is, there's, there's good news and bad news for Vermont River Conservancy. I think part of the good news is some of their funding can be released so they can pay off, they can get their money from Vermont Housing Conservation Board because they didn't want to give money on a site that was dirty. So they can get that money paid off. However, we don't know if we can keep the cleanup funds. We don't know if it's an eligible brownfield site in EPA's mind. And if we take that out, then it changes the benefit cost analysis because there is more cost to remove the soils. So we're kind of waiting for some information before we even have the conversation with the EPA. But it's, yeah, we kind of got, if we can use the EPA money, that's great because cleanup does need to happen. And there are PAH in the soils, so it'd be great if we can still use it. But if we can't use it, now we need to, it changes the benefit cost on the hazard mitigation, so it might not be as in terms of, or even an eligible project. And then we need to find money.
Vermont law school. It's so odd of the state to have that dual standard.
Yeah, that's, it's like, oh, if you're in an urban area, it's okay to have this much, but if you're like.
Yeah.
Like, shouldn't it have something to do with like health and not?
Maybe they don't want urban people to live as long.
I do think it is.
It's all a health standard.
Yeah.
I think there was a lot of pushback in, in trying to, um, you know, not recognize that urban background levels are higher. I mean, I agree, there is still a risk. But try to clean it up to a standard that, you know, your neighbor isn't necessarily going to attain, but.
I would think if there was a problem with the EPA, that we could go back to the state and say, reevaluate us and make us be urban. And they would understand the quandary that, that creates.
Yes, yeah. So that's something that we need to work through and relatively soon. Because VRC is working on kind of doing all the work that they need to do to get the money in October.
Maybe your legislators could help.
I don't think we need to go there yet.
Okay.
And then the only other piece of news on that, Liz and Kathy.
Hey, were you, were you there that day?
There was a site walk for that site. So Vermont River, the Hilltop Montessori seventh and eighth graders were working with an artist, kind of explore the reuse of that site. And she was really interesting. She brings an Abenaki lens to her work. I think she is Abenaki and it's a lot of storytelling. They were all very supportive of the floodplain restoration. But we did a site walk beforehand, which never really was a walk. It was more Steve Libby from VRC and I talking to an amazing crowd of people. It was great. It was really great. And then afterwards, the students, they made presentations of their work, week-long work at the Root Social Justice Center. So that was great because it was right across the site, this, from the site. So there was probably a hundred people there. It was, it was great. There's a lot of interest from the neighbors and the neighborhoods around it, so it was pretty exciting.
Very cool.
Yeah, and I think if the EPA grant goes through, there will, will be more kind of community conversation and reuse planning going on as part of that. That's that site. And then the, the other sites on here are the S D Organ Complex. That one is another case of, they had a corrective action plan and part of it required a soil vapor intrusion system as part of the cleanup. Everything else had been cleaned up. But as a result of the change in standards, they actually no longer need to have the soil vapor system. And so they were, we helped them pay to amend the corrective action plan. That's out for public comment now. I think it closes June 21st and after that, they'll be released of that responsibility of installing it in one of the buildings.
Which building was it?
And then the Brattleboro Museum and Arts Center now owns its several buildings at the end of Main Street, right before the bridge. It's the nail salon, Blue Moose, where Wyndham Movement used to be. They purchased the properties after doing the phase one from our program. They're doing phase two, there's some soil sampling and soil vapor testing that's going to happen later this week.
So they now, the storefronts all the way down.
To them.
The property behind my office.
Yeah, the Art Street property, yes.
And have they got a public plan for how those, what those buildings are going to be used for?
There's not a public plan. I think they're in discussions with the reuse of them. So that's where our sites are. Have had several discussions with other sites in town. That's what happens, a lot of discussion and not always well. Action, but.
Less conversation, no more action.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
So what's, sorry, so then we have 51,000 left and we have until December?
Uh, September, but no, I'll, I'll, we'll get another year off of that.
Another, yeah.
With the extension, so it'll be September of 2019.
Spend all that in this.
Yeah.
Spend the control.
Yes, so I'll, I'll start looking at an area-wide plan and maybe we can, maybe I'll have a draft of an RFP or something, RFQ that we can talk about.
Okay, certified local government.
Gosh, I'm talking to you.
Moving right along.
So the memo that you got in your packets, that was actually done by a free student, but it's one I practiced. Nice job.
And did you print it out?
Oh, I did not.
That's all right, just give us the rundown.
I don't even have. So certified local government is a program that I think comes out of the National Park Service. It's to promote kind of preservation, historic preservation in a community. There are about 14 towns in Vermont that have a CLG, a lot of them date back to the 1980s. And there's a couple of things that you need to have to become a certified local government. You need to have a historic preservation commission, be staffed between three and nine people. And they really want a majority of it to have a background, actually, in certain disciplines. So architecture, historic preservation, archaeology. So it's kind of interesting reading through. Urban planning is nice, but it's not, not one of the, yeah, it's kind of funny. They, they have historic architecture, architecture, architectural history, archaeology and history. And I think with the exceptions of the architectures, they're graduate degrees they're looking for. People with graduate degrees. So, so the majority of, that's what, that's what they want. If we couldn't staff it that way.
Staff meeting paid or staff meeting, could be volunteer staff?
No, it would be a volunteer commission and they have to meet three or four times a year.
Like the Architectural Review Commission?
Well, we, we already have a design review committee that makes recommendations on development within the historic districts. So in our land use regulations, we have a small committee if any changes are being proposed, even like windows or doors, the placement. It goes before this board, our commission committee, sorry. And they make a recommendation to the DRB. So there has been some discussion with them about, would you want to expand and, you know, become this? And you would still do that work. Having a certified local government, you know, there'd be a staff person from the planning department, we'd staff that committee. The town would be eligible for grants annually. So a certain amount of funding flows from the National Park Service into the State Historic Preservation Office, the SHPO. And then they take a certain percentage of that money and make it eligible for preservation grants. And you can kind of, you can do different things, you know, you could do, you could come up with design guidelines, you could do survey work. You could put together nominations for the National Register. Some town did oral histories, just anything that kind of advances historic preservation.
Kind of like public education?
Yep, yeah, and public education, you know, maybe having speakers in or other educational events is part of, I think, another requirement.
So are, are, are we in favor of this?
That's what we're kind of.
Are you in favor of this?
It's funny, I was just talking to someone.
Yeah.
You are in favor.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think that we have the staffing capabilities for it. I don't see a lot of downside. Jess had sent some questions. It doesn't present any additional regulatory barriers. I think it provides some funding that doesn't exist right now. I mean, they are matching grants, but I think that you can use staff time as matching, you know.
Can three M funds for property owners of historic properties to do, you know, facade improvements or historical?
Fellas Follow several years ago, one of my favorites, favorite examples. Their CLG program ran a painted lady, so it was the Victorians. And I think they, they had a preservation or, you know, consultant come in and talk about Victorians and talk about the color schemes. And for several years, they ran a contest. So I think then people could consult with this consultant, put together a scheme for their house and then they'd submit it. And then they would choose a winner and I think there was discounted paint or something, so. You know, so I think there are activities like that that we can promote.
I think, I think it's all another tool on the toolbox.
What's the, I should know this, but Marlboro got a big grant with somebody, with a couple of other organizations in town to do that historic.
Documentation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was that, I'm not pulling up anything and I can see from your faces that you guys are.
You mean designating historic?
It was, it was sort of coming up with the more history of the town of Brattleboro. Sort of how people who lived here and the things that they did. And it sounds like this is a, I mean, there must be calls over for that project because that's an ongoing project.
Oh, is that the book, the Brattleboro?
Yeah, I think it's.
Words Project?
Maybe, yes.
That might be from the arts NEA maybe or?
It might be, it might be. But I think it was, there were a number of different groups, including Marlboro, that were engaged in it. And it was about uncovering more of the history. It seems like.
When you say Marlboro, do you mean Marlboro College or the town?
Yeah, Marlboro College, sorry, not the town, Marlboro College. And it seems like this, whoever, if we start this, they should get all that material because they did a lot of, I mean, I know they're getting some Marlboro College students to do research.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not too familiar, but it sounds like something.
Yeah, I can ask.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not too familiar, but it sounds like something, information sharing is be good. I mean, you know, you could do, you could get some funding, you could train people how to do oral histories and then, you know, maybe, maybe talk to like SD Oregon workers or, you know, if there's many, so like you could put together lots of projects.
I feel like historical society, I feel like we're well staged.
Yes.
You know what I mean?
Yeah. Yeah, and we haven't had any discussions with them. I wanted to bring it to you first. We do talk about the Certified Local Government in the, in the town plan. It's good there. There has been interest from some citizens that have, I said, I mean, our next step could be that we could, Devin Coleman kind of runs the program up there. The Design Review Committee has been interested in having him down to kind of host a walking tour of some of like Clark Canal and Morton Homestead and the downtown because they're kind of close by. And then he could speak to the CLG program. We can make it a public event, so people can come and ask questions and kind of look at preserving it from there.
It's kind of a funny name.
It does. It does, it's very bureaucratic.
There's no way you'd understand what the name would have was that you did from that name.
Yeah. So it seems, I mean, it seems like there's interest. There's several steps to go through, but I think any of them, maybe the first step is check it down.
I think it's a great opportunity.
Yeah.
And it's not a workload issue for you guys. Yeah, let's do that. Yeah, do that. Yeah, take care of that. That sounds good.
We're already, we're already staffing the design, I mean, we think the benefit's to the town, you know, if there are people willing to serve on the committee and do some work. And there is an active historical society. It's maybe not that different from the work that they're already doing.
Do we have people with PhDs in historical history that work in the town?
No, I believe so. You do that.
Just you, of course.
Why would I ask you? Town, I mean...
No, I mean, who volunteer on these committees?
No, right now, our Design Review Committee, we have Barbara George, which I don't, sorry. They, she is very active in the historical society, and I don't know exactly what her background is, but she's, she sits on the State Historic Preservation Board, she's very active in historic preservation. She actually owns several of the SD Oregon buildings as well. And then there is Maya Hesagawa. She is actually on the Design Review Board. She worked in Boston and I think worked on historic preservation issues. She worked for the city in planning.
I mean, it's a volunteer board. Would the board have to be made up of residents of the town of Lumley? I mean, or, you know?
That would be up for the SLUG board to decide. The federal law, it doesn't have to just be town residents.
Yeah, like kind of as a subsidy, I feel like you'd want to set it up that they can be residents of like a surrounding area, so you can have a larger catch of...
Yeah. That's possible if the SLUG board is interested in it. And then we do have an architect on the board.
Oh, okay. I mean, I was just wondering because of the qualifications.
I was surprised when I was reading.
For a town committee?
Yeah.
Get on board there, lady.
I'm a medieval.
Right place, right time. So, yeah.
All right.
Okay.
So we'll move that one forward.
Yep. So our last thing, potential zoning changes.
Land use regulations.
Yeah.
Is that the same as zoning?
Yes.
Okay.
So last year, Kathy and Kate, you may remember this, and Liz, of course, before we got into the town plan, we were working on some minor changes to our land use regulations, some fixes that the zoning administrator and staff had kind of come up with, just minor things. Because our, our zoning is from 2015, so it's relatively, but there's always kinks to work out. So what I've listed here are kind of the first set that we had agreed to, but then we realized we needed to do the town plan and so we couldn't. This was a handout I gave.
Okay.
I'm sorry, didn't get this to you before.
I'm like, oh, yes, I remember discussing these.
Since that time, you know, and we'll go back over these, we don't have to do it tonight. This is kind of a refresher for some of you and to introduce Felicity. And I'll just bring the language the next time, just because we previously consented to it doesn't mean we need to stick with it. We have some new ones that have popped up over the last year that we might want to consider as well, including opening up some of the PUDs to different zoning districts like the traditional neighborhood development in the service center. The very last one here under Section 212, that, that's just a clean-up one. The first one on the backside is also...
Yeah, what a PUD.
It's a planned unit development. It is a way to develop land that generally relaxes the dimensional standards and sometimes even the density standards, so you can often, you just get flexibility to, because you provide a superior design.
Primarily institutional uses have their own kind of campus design.
Yeah.
That they're, that's unique to them. And when historically in Brattleboro, there were a lot of PUDs and...
Well, this is what Rob was talking about, in my initiation.
Yeah, so they used to be used in Brattleboro as a runaround around the zoning. So if you wanted to put it in industrial use somewhere, but it wasn't zoned for that, you'd go for a PUD.
And they've been reined in through the new plan and the new zoning regulations.
Okay. It's just a kind of a creative site design is really what it's supposed to be.
So now you're, this section, this change is to do what?
To allow them in the service center district.
Well, we can spend more time.
Okay.
On them, but if we want to encourage residential in the service center area, so the main one being Putney Road, then our zoning administrator has recommended that we consider allowing that type of PUD there, which seems to be...
So for example, would that allow like the Wyndham Mansory Trust to use the other side of the street from where the land plotter was?
Well, that happens to be industrial zoning districts across the street. Yeah. It's not the service center. But we'll bring in, I'll bring in a zoning map and, because another thing that was suggested that we look at is the zoning around Exit 1. So we have a couple of different zoning districts there. We have Neighborhood Center, we go to Mixtures pretty quickly, we have a lot of residential. Some people feel like we don't have a lot of room for residential growth of higher density in, in the town. And so if you look at like the Red Clover Commons project on the, behind Walgreens, I think it's a really good project. I think it fits the scale, the neighborhood. You'd be, you couldn't replicate that. We have some barriers.
Oh, well, by all means.
So I think, you know, we want to look at that area, look and make sure that we think there's enough place to allow that type of development to happen, and then probably also look at some of the footprint regulations that we have to make sure that, if we think that's a good project, that more of that could happen in appropriate places.
So should we study this and then talk about it more at the next meeting?
Yeah, I know, we're probably veteran team.
Yes, and we can bring the zoning map and kind of maybe have a broader zoning discussion if that works. I mean, it's hard to just throw zoning stuff at you.
And what's the timeframe on this?
There's no deadline. I think that we were thinking of if we work through it through the summer, maybe in conjunction with looking at the downtown master plan, maybe we'd have something for the fall to pass along to the SLUG board for public hearings, just to do the zoning.
So do you think at our next meeting, we'll be beginning to discuss the downtown master plan?
Yes.
Is our next meeting?
It is July...
I do have 10 minutes.
Thank you. No. Yes, it's July 2nd. But July 2nd, 4th is kind of the holiday for us.
Wednesday?
It's a, yeah, just the 2nd one for everybody.
Yeah, I don't have anything planned.
Yeah, let's stick to the 2nd. Yeah.
All right, great. And we'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I don't make a motion to adjourn.
Bone Fabe?
Hi.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Sue.